In today's meeting, we'd like to acknowledge that we are gathering today on the Treaty territory of the Mississaugas of the credit of the First Nation, before then the traditional territory of the Haudenosaunee, Huron, and Wendoc. We also acknowledge that the many First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and other global indigenous people that now call Brampton their home, we are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. Please rise for the singing of our national anthem, to be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With loving hearts we see thee rise, the true North strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glory, us and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
I'd ask members of council and the public to please also remember and hold in their prayers this week the family of Bill Graham, who passed away on January 15th. Bill was an active member of the business community in Brampton, founding Graham Brothers Construction Limited over 50 years ago, had many proud and strong connections to our city. Welcome to our regular council meeting, January 23rd, 2019. All members of council are present, except for Councillor Singh and Dylan, who are en route and stuck in traffic. I remind everyone at today's meeting, please ensure that you're not using electronic devices. Council members are refrained as much as possible from using them during the meeting. Members of council, there are a few agenda changes identified in the package in front of you. I will ask the city clerk to review the changes for today's agenda since its publication last Friday.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and staff and those public in attendance are watching. These are the changes for today's agenda. Item 3.2, which are minutes from the City Council's special meeting of this past Monday, January 21st, are presented to members on their desks this morning. As well, the minutes, item 10.2, from the Committee of Council meeting of January 16th, last Wednesday, are on members' desks this morning. And 10.3, which are the minutes from the Brampton Sports Hall of Fame Committee meeting of last Thursday, January 17th, those minutes are on members' desks. As well, distributed yesterday electronically by the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer, and on members' desks this morning, is item 18.1, a briefing report on government relations matters. As well, members of council, there has been a delegation request that's been received. It will be identified on the agenda as delegation 6.1, a delegation from Sylvia Roberts, Brampton resident, and this is in regard to item 18.3 on today's agenda, which is City of Brampton's draft response to the Province of Ontario's proposed increasing housing supply in Ontario consultation document. And those are the changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have... Are there any other additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none? Oh, there is, okay. Councillor Vicente.
Thank you, Mayor. If it pleases this council, I'd like to add a new item of business, a discussion on community improvement plans.
Thank you, Councillor Vicente.
Mr. Mayor, it's a two-thirds vote to add that item. If it gets added, it would be identified as 16.1 under "Other New Business."
All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Okay, we have a motion moved by Councillor Fortini, seconded by Councillor Santos, that the agenda of the regular council meeting of January 23rd, 2019, be approved as published, circulated, and amended. All those in favor? Motion carries. Do any members have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none? The clerk will also so note for the meeting minutes. We are now ready to move to the next item of public business of today's council agenda, item 3, minutes. We have the following council minutes before us today. Minutes of City Council Regular Meeting, December 12th, 2018. That's 3.1. 3.2, Minutes of City Council Special Meeting, January 21st, 2019, just distributed at this meeting. And I have a motion from Councillor Fortini, seconded by Councillor Santos, to approve the minutes as printed and circulated. All those in favor? Oh, Councillor Vicente.
I would like to request time to review the minutes as we just received them. Is that possible for us to defer to later in the meeting?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that is possible, if that's the will of council. The minutes from the December 12th meeting were distributed, published with the agenda last Friday, and the minutes from this past Monday's meeting were just distributed this morning. So council can hold down both sets of minutes, or just one?
January 16th.
Sorry.
January 23rd.
Sorry, January 16th, Committee of Council.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the January 16th Committee of Council minutes are item 10.2 on today's agenda, when we get to committee reports. So through you, Mr. Mayor, committee recommendations only were just published with the agenda last Friday. The committee minutes themselves were distributed this morning.
I understand, Mr. Mayor. I'm fine, thank you. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item 4, Consent Agenda. The items listed with an asterisk on the agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. The consent motion is to adopt this matter on today's agenda without the need for a separate discussion on the item. Unless a member requests a separate discussion, does any member wish to add an item or remove an item from the consent motion on the agenda? And I have a motion from Councillor Fortini, actually no, I have a motion from Councillor Fortini and Councillor Santos, to approve the consent motion. But this is not the same...
Yeah, that's item 8.3, which is consent. Unless somebody wants to remove it from consent.
Okay, so this is all, there's only one consent?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. All those in favor? Our next item is item 5.1, An Announcement Regarding the ITAC Smart Cities Technology Summit, February 26th, 2019, at the Rose Theatre in Brampton. Joe Portieri, our acting CEO, is here today for this announcement. Councillor Singh is the council's sponsor. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to acknowledge and thank Councillor Singh as the Chair of Corporate Services for sponsoring this announcement. What's really important to this city is how we're going to evolve and support and enable data intelligence, information technology, digital innovation, and it is something that is embedded in our 2040 vision and guided by that technology lens. Our digital innovation and information technology team here at the city created an actual smart cities unit, and this dynamic team created a very clear strategy and framework, which is going to enable the city to take command of how technology shapes our future, not just as a corporation, but how we serve our residents, how residents interact with each other, with the services they can receive from us, as well as the region. The opportunity to work together with the City of Brampton, with our internal departments and divisions, as well as with the private and public sector, has created a shared opportunity to build Brampton with extensive collaboration and dynamic possibilities. Internally, led by our Chief Information Officer, Catherine Coulson, we established some amazing partnerships within the city across our business units, including our Digital Innovation Technology Division, Economic Development and Culture, our transit team, Public Works and Engineering, Corporate Services, Commissioner's Office, and Strategic Communications, as well as Planning and Development. We have worked together, we fostered these partnerships, and most important, and very recently, as per the mayor's acknowledgement at the beginning of this, digital innovation and our Economic Development and Culture Team have partnered with the Information Technology Association of Canada, so ITAC, to host the ITAC Smart Cities Technology Summit, February 26th, 2019, at the Brampton Rose Theatre. The main objective of this summit is to bring together stakeholders from all levels of government with technology vendors to exchange their experiences and expertise, as well as explore collaboration and partnership opportunities. This event is also a fantastic opportunity to put Brampton on the map, together with leading municipal communities that actively and successfully utilize smart city concepts to leverage technology to improve the quality of our urban environments and the people we serve. Finding new and innovative ways to engage all levels of government and the private sector where investments, risks, and benefits are shared could also create new business and partnership models to accelerate Brampton's smart city journey and to help create a great city to live, work, learn, and visit. Thank you. Really looking forward to this.
Thank you for our, to our CEO. I just note, I think there's a lot of excitement behind this Smart Cities Technology Summit. Thank you to Councillor Singh for being the sponsor. I know Councillor Dylan's done some research on this as well, and I think there's lots of potential here for the city on where this could go. We have a motion to add delegation, moved by Councillor Fortini, seconded by Councillor Santos, that the delegation from Sylvia Roberts, Brampton resident, to the council meeting of January 23rd, 2019, regards to item 18.3, the City of Brampton's draft response to the Province of Ontario's proposed increasing housing supply in Ontario consultation document be received, added to the agenda. So do you need a motion to change? Okay, good, so Sylvia?
Good morning, council. My name is Sylvia Roberts. This is on item 18.3 in the agenda. I apologize for the lateness of it being added. It was, it's only, City Council meetings are the notes, what's going on is only accessible to the public when it gets put out on Friday. When looking at it, it looked like the city has, it looks like a rush job. It looks like something you'd get from a student who's doing it the night before. The province opened up consultation on November 25th, and it's closed Friday. It looks incomplete and like it has not been properly reviewed by other departments, which is very concerning. I know the city's had a lot of things to juggle, but we need to make sure that councillors fully understand what is going on and is in the reports, so when your constituents ask you, is the city doing a good job, you can know with complete knowledge that the answer is yes, and look them in the eye and tell them, yes, their money is being well spent. I had the chance to look through the thing and the agenda, and I noticed a number of issues. On speed, it's, Councillor Vicente brought up, maybe we need to look at pre-zoning, and I'm aware that Elliot, Mr. Elliot, had concerns about losing some control over it. But the issue is, if you focus too much on quality, you wind up with shortages. People can cope with stuff that isn't good fitting, but if you have three people in a one-bedroom, that's bad, but if they're homeless, that's something entirely else and much worse, and people cannot cope with that. The city current official plan is dated. It's from 2006, it was approved in '08. Provincial legislation says it should be done every five years. It's 2019, it's a couple of years overdue, and council needs to move on it. It's very dated and reflects planning principles from decades ago. It has a very incom, it's where it has mixed use, which is what the province is talking about. It's stuff that has been shoehorned in and forced in because of the province making us do it, not because we actually thought it through and how it was implemented. For cost, it's, I know we like to say developers pay the development charges, and it's true. I know the city complains about how we don't get enough money from it, how it doesn't pay for the cost, but we're concerned about the development charge not happening, but the issue is, having that and then using a couple of years of prop tax to pay that, and then treating it like free money, because while the infrastructure line is replaced in 40 to 60 years, is not a very systematic way to do it. If you look at the City of London in the UK, when they built their sewer system, it's now needing to be updated 150 years later because they had foresight. When things are being built off development charges, you have very short-sighted views on how to point out, because it just needs to be good enough. And who actually pays for it? Because the charges are established, the developer borrows the money from the bank, and the cost of the development charge, and the interest is tacked onto the housing. So who pays for it? It's the homebuyers. And where do they get that money? The bank. So it's going through multiple level, types of interest. Your bank, the loans that a developer would use are looking at like 10%. The city's borrowing cost is much less, and that gets applied to the cost of the housing, and then you have to float on, what, a 5% interest mortgage for the next 30 years? So I know we want the developer to pay, but the reality is, you're making homeowners pay, and you're making us pay at a much higher interest rate than the city would if it actually properly planned things out, instead of, well, let's do it cheap so the homeowners don't have to pay more in tax, but we're still being, making, we're still made to pay out more because the city is not thinking it through. Yes, there's a concern about too much money is going to the developers, but when there's more money to be made in something, more investors will shift their investments to it. If you ask the treasurer, it's a case of when you've got two items where they have the same risk portfolio, but there's more money to be made, people will choose that. So you'll have more developers come and actually look at it and want to do business in Brampton. I've heard there's a number of developers who don't want to do business in Brampton because Brampton's too much trouble. On rent, the Ford government, I'm sure, is going to do a great job of making it easier for landlords to evict tenants, but what are the odds that they're actually going to look at tenant protections for tenants? A lot of tenants, they do have rights, but they're unaware of their rights. If you have legal protections but don't realize you have them and therefore don't use them, how there are they actually? If you look at the housing in Brampton, it talks about a vibrant market. The reality is, since 2002, according to the CMHC, the amount of rentals in Brampton has increased 12%. The population has increased by over 70%. So if you look at the amount of rentals per population, it's plunged, and that's caused a supply shortage. Without that, the market has to turn to things like basement apartments and rooming houses. That's where we get, I know there are some councillors who want to thoroughly enforce the rules, but the reason we have these problems is because of decades of mismanagement by the city. The city needs to review its official plan, and yes, I'm aware, I'm running short of time, so what I want is council to do, have staff do a better job of this, so it's worth properly thinking it through, and we can give it our full attention and do a good job.
Thank you, Sylvia. Now we have the motion to receive the delegation from Sylvia Roberts, Brampton resident. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our next item, 8.1, is a staff report regarding the Bolt Arts Brampton Request for Municipal Support, referred matters, item from item 1, 2019. This item was subject of a delegation before Committee of Council last week, seeking a continuation of the waiver of rent and utility fees of Bolt Arts Brampton, and Committee referred the matter to staff for report back at today's council. Do any members have questions or comments on the staff report? Seeing none, we have a motion by Councillor Fortini, seconded by Councillor Santos. This is a lengthy motion. We have it up on the, can we get it up on the screen, or?
You can. You don't have to read it, it's actually published with the agenda.
So this is published with the agenda?
To approve the staff reports.
And the motion, all those in favor? That motion carries. Our next item, 18, 8.2, A Staff Report Regarding the Community Service User Fee Charges, Proposed Recreation Fee Increases, Referred Matter, item 42, 2018. This item was the subject of a debate by council back in December, and community service user fees were referred back to staff for further consideration and report back to council today. Do any members have questions or comments on the staff report? I say thank you to staff for addressing the concerns there on user fees, and I think they've done a good job at reflecting what was raised. So we have a motion from Councillor Santos, seconded by Councillor Willens. All those in favor? We're now on item 10, Committee Reports or Minutes. We have three committee reports in the form of minutes on today's agenda. Under council's meeting procedures, the committee or section chair introduces their committee report or minutes and summarizes the matters considered and now brought forward to today's council for ratification. Council Maderos, you chaired the Planning Development Committee, which met on January 14th. The committee minutes are here for council approval. I now pass the chair to you to lead the council in consideration of these committee minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, you have before you the minutes, the planning minutes. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Nope. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councillor Maderos, seconded by Councillor, looks like Santos, to approve the committee minutes. All those in favor? Motion carries. Committee of Council met on January 16th. The committee recommendations were only published with the meeting agenda last week, and the minutes were distributed at the start of today's meeting and are here for council approval. I will now pass the chair to the respective section chairs in order of consideration during the committee meeting to lead council in the consideration of the committee recommendations. We start off with Councillor Dylan, who chaired the Economic Development and Culture Section.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the Economic Development and Culture Section, there was no staff presentations, no report. There was a couple of new business items. There was a motion passed to provide regular communication updates on the city's website regarding Ryerson, and that a standing item be included on the Committee of Council agenda regarding post-secondary matters that passed. There was an added item by Councillor Vicente in a subsequent motion that passed also, where economic development staff be directed to include economic development implications, a economic development implication section in future planning reports. And then there was a motion put forward by the mayor that also passed, where Brampton staff hosted Tamil Heritage Reception in January 19, January 2019, and that staff also report back on different corporate and Heritage Month events. That concludes the economic development section. There's no further questions, I'll pass it back to you for ratification.
Thank you. Next section is Councillor Singh, who chaired the Corporate Services Section.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, you have before you the minutes from committee. Do any members have questions or comments on the committee minutes or recommendations? Seeing that there are two, am I able to, Councillor? Mayor, Councillor Fortini?
Thank you, through the mayor, through the chair. I'd just like to amend on my motion and the staffing model to remove that position for the liaison. Just amended to remove it.
So through you, Chair Singh, what Councillor Fortini, I believe, is moving as an amendment that requires a seconder is on recommendation CW 022, 2019, to actually remove clause 12 that says that the position of council liaison coordinator be retained as a corporate position within the city.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Speaking to the motion, Councillor Willens, are you speaking to the motion, or?
No.
Okay, so can I come back to you? I think Councillor Pleschy wants to speak to the motion. Councillor Pleschy?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to, I understand Councillor Fortini seems to have a change of heart in allowing my amendment to his original motion, and that's understandable, because I too have also had a change of heart with regards to the aspects of the entire motion. And I go back to the fact that I don't fully understand, nor, and I've also looked in other municipalities, I don't understand why we're deciding to make all of our staff political, and I don't know of any other municipalities that have an entire staff that is political. I think a good combination of political and corporate staff, I think, suits us to the best of our ability to represent our constituents, so if we're going to have a revote on that, then I, in the past, have voted in favor of it, but I am now thinking that it doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem reasonable that we would turn our, well, first, let go of all of our staff that is currently corporate and make them political, other than if maybe councillors have another motive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, seeing that, Councillor Willens, do you want to comment, or you want me to come back to you after?
I want to, in the minutes of the Corporate Services, I want to pull CW.
Yeah, so we'll do that, yeah, we'll do the vote, and then...
I have exactly the vote and the call to vote.
Okay, then we'll come back to you.
Okay, the rest of the minutes.
Okay. So I guess we'll take a vote.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair Singh. Councillor Fortini's motion is an amendment to a committee recommendation. It requires a seconder. So we need...
Okay, do we have any second, okay, seeing...
Councillor Maderos is identified.
Okay, so recorded vote has been requested?
Sorry.
So through you, Chair Singh, just for clarity, for members of council, so the vote, recorded vote then, is just on Councillor Fortini's amendment to remove from recommendation CW 022, 2019, clause 12, which speaks to the position of the council liaison coordinator. All in favor of the amendment proposed by Councillor?
I think, I think there's two comments. No, you're good? Okay, we're gonna call, we're gonna...
Sorry, may I ask a question through the chair to the board?
Okay, yeah.
So it's strictly just, just for clarification, we're strictly just removing number 12. We're not revoting on the entire motion?
Through you, Chair Singh, that remains to be determined by council, but I understood a recorded vote was requested only on Councillor Fortini's motion, but if there's a request to do a recorded vote on the balance, that's something council could consider.
Well, right now, the request from Councillor Fortini is on number 12, and removing that. So if we could vote on this, and then if anybody wants to add additional motions, they're more than welcome to.
So we're doing two recorded votes?
Okay.
So we're recording both of the events?
Two recorded votes.
So through you, Chair Singh, for clarity, we are voting now through a recorded vote just on Councillor Fortini's amendment to remove clause 12. All in favor of Councillor Fortini's amendment, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor of the amendment is Councillor Santos, Councillor Vicente, Councillor Maderos, Councillor Williams, Councillor Fortini, Chair Singh, Councillor Dylan. All opposed to the amendment, please stand to be counted. Showing opposed to the amendment is Councillor Willens, Councillor Pleschy, Councillor Bowman, Mayor Brown. Mr. Chair, that motion carries, seven to four.
Okay, Councillor Pleschy, do you have another motion you wanted to present?
Well, I'm asking for a record of the motion on the support model motion.
Okay. Does anybody want to speak to the original, so that's on the floor now, the original support model motion? Does anybody want to speak to that? I see Councillor Bowman. Councillor Bowman, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. I just, I'm a little confused, and that's why I went on the board before the vote. We just voted to eliminate that position. Councillor Pleschy has made an amendment that we have, or perhaps he has not made an amendment yet, that we have a mixture of corporate staff and political... yet, that we have a mixture of corporate staff and political staff. Well, if we have the corporate staff, we need that position again to look after that. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused on why we just voted on that when if we do have another vote that changes that act, we still need that position.
So through you, Chair Singh, to members of council, I did not hear a motion placed to go back to the original model. I understood the second recorded vote that was requested would be on the ballots of the clauses under recommendation CW oh-two-two, twenty-nineteen, which are clauses one through eleven, which were recommended by committee last week. I have, unless, Mr. Chair, you've entertained a motion, I haven't heard a motion introduce to amend those other clauses at this.
What I got is, but Council Fortini was the first to put a motion on and he removed twelve and now Council Pleschy wants to put a motion, he has a motion on the, can I, can I, yeah. So Council Pleschy has a motion to revote on the, on the recommendations with the additional position. So that's what I was hoping we're talking to right now.
Okay, since, I still have the floor?
Yeah.
I still have another question as well. Thanks, through you, Mr. Chair. The costing model and the model of where assistance are going to fit, do we, have we decided on that yet? Do we have, do we have an absolute budget that we can, that we can put for this change so we know a concrete figure that we're working with to pass?
Through you, Chair Singh, clause one of the committee recommendation that's before council now talks to an estimated approximate two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget per counselor, offset by the existing council office budget, which if you recall from the conversation last week, approximately nets out at about an additional million dollars that would be required to fund this proposed model through these recommendations.
Okay, and did we decide on whether we have to rearrange any office space or anything like that?
Through you, Chair Singh, yes. If you look at clause six of the recommendation, it speaks to council approving option one, which was recommended last week, and that option one for accommodations is to remove the existing ten workstations that are outside each of the councilors offices today and replace that workstation with two smaller workstations, which essentially are touchdown stations, very temporary in nature, and no additional construction work will be pursued as per the options presented in council's decision.
Okay, so the budget we're voting on is still to be massaged a little bit here and there. We're not voting on a, on a, on an absolute number, a concrete budget. Is that what I'm to understand?
Through you, Chair Singh, yes. This sets the, the ground stakes for moving forward because the required offsets that council's asked for will have to be found through the twenty-nineteen budget process. In addition, there are some one-time costs to implement this model, as referenced last week, including technology setup for these additional staff that would have to be pursued and presumably all that will be worked out in the coming weeks leading up to the budget process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Peter.
So, Council Dillon, do you have comments? You're, you want to speak to the motion? Okay, yeah, the order was mixed up. Yes, Council.
No, I didn't want to speak to the motion, but I, I had, before we voted on the amendments, I had said I wanted this pulled out separate to vote on, a recorded vote on it. So is it any different than what Council Pleschy wants to get?
Through you, Chair Singh, no. Perhaps, I'm still trying to understand, I don't, I don't, I did not hear Council Pleschy move a motion except for taking a vote. So there are no further amendments currently on the floor of council, aside from the committee recommendation, which are clauses one through eleven without amendment. Clause twelve has been disposed of.
Okay, I'm good. I just wanted to be clear to make sure that what I pulled is the same as what Council Pleschy's talking about. So I'm good with that. Thanks.
Okay, Mayor Brown.
I have a motion on a different aspect of corporate services, so should I wait until we finish this discussion?
Yeah, I think that's.
Just keep me on the board for.
Okay. Councilor Pleschy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to confirm, Peter, Council Bowman's questions regarding the amount this is going to cost and to the effect that we don't know where that money's coming from now, as in the original motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Council Dillon, was for staff to find it within the budget. Is that still the case with the, because I think Council Fortini's motion is a little bit different than your original motion. It's the same motion that you, that you introduced the first time? Council Fortini has now moved it at committee and we're voting on it again here today at council? Is that correct?
Through you, Chair Singh, if I can be helpful, clause eight in the clauses one through eleven that are currently before council says that during the twenty-nineteen budget approval process, further consideration of possible financial offsets, including service delivery reductions or adjustments, be identified in order to offset implementing the new council office support model as decided by council, such that there is a zero tax impact to the taxpayer.
So I don't, I'm not sure how we achieve that without actually having this discussion at budget.
Through the chair, as, as stated by the clerk, what we're intending to do as part of the budget process is to present where those offsets are coming from so that it's, it's a neutral impact that whatever the costs are to implement the political staffing model, that we would find those offsets within the budget and present that at budget time to show that the net zero impact.
And what does that look like, Joe? Are you going to be able to come to us to say, you know, we've made, we've made cuts to the budget in these areas? Like, I'm going to want to know where they come from.
Through the chair, that, that would be our approach, Council.
And as of right now, hypothetically, for example, what would, what would one of those cuts look like?
We are still in the process of trying to identify those. As identified in the motion, we're looking at April fifteenth for that effective start date. So there's a number of steps we need to do, including working closely with human resources and the clerk's office to identify, as well as finance, to identify where some of these positions can land, any efficiencies that can be identified. Are there any redundant, additional redundant positions in the corporation we can use to offset these costs as well? Those are some of the areas we're going to be looking at primarily, as well as, you know, hoping for some strong feedback and recommendations for KPMG's core service review to help identify those efficiencies as well. So as of today, exactly, I cannot state, but that's what we're going to be looking at over the next several weeks.
Okay, thanks, Joe. So procedurally then, Mr. Clerk, if we vote on this here today and at, through budget, some members of council, or maybe a majority of the members of council, don't like where those cuts are coming from, how does this motion fall within that if we, if we fully don't, don't like where city staff is coming back to, to council to say where they found those efficiencies or cuts through various departments?
Through you, Chair Singh, if council adopts clauses one through eleven today, they're effectively setting the course and making its decision on the go-forward model and the deliberation on the source of funding for that, as the CEO said, will, staff will identify. If, if council during the budget process has different ideas about sources of funding, those are motions that could be debated during budget committee to identify. But council essentially today is setting the course and making a decision that it is going to a political model.
So a decision based on, on the fact that we don't know where the money's coming from, we don't really know how much it's going to cost as of right now, but we're, we're making that decision. So just to confirm, council's about to make a decision, not understanding where the money's coming from, not understanding where staff are going to find efficiencies or possible cuts. Council's about to make that decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council Maderos?
Thank you through the chair. Joe, on many initiatives that we do here at the city, budget allocation, we wait during budget process to decide exactly where we find those funds will be allocated from. Is that part of the budget process? Is that why we go through budget process every year? Through the chair?
Through, through the chair, if I understand the question correctly, I believe the answer's yes.
And through the chair, when we talk about offsets, I think you would understand that we don't want to have any service impacts. That means we don't want any negative impacts on, on service that we provide our community currently. Is that something that's understandable by staff?
Through, through the chair, yes, that is staff's understanding. We're not looking at reducing, for instance, on a day like today, snow removal to offset this cost. That's, that's not an option. It's, we're looking at ways where there are, you know, minimal to no impact to service delivery across the corporation. That is our primary focus when we're looking for these offsets.
And thank you. Through the, through, Mr. Mayor, when we talk about the core service review, the core service review, its purpose will be able to come to tell us how effectively we're delivering those core services and are there activity or is there activity here in the municipality that necessarily doesn't make sense? It might be a decision point for council to determine if they want to continue to offer that service or if we want to continue to look at how we find efficiencies, et cetera, et cetera. Is that part of the discussion around core service review?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct. That is part of the scope of the core service review.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would say that this is very appropriate to have this type of discussion within the framework, within the context of the budget in a core service review. And I think the timing is adequate. It's, it's part of the policy formulation and it's proper decision-making done with due diligence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. To the clerk, to the clerk, my question is, members of council, is the rule to speak twice here as well, right now?
Through you, Chair Singh, yes, at city council, the rule for members of council is speak twice.
So Council Pleschy, I believe, has spoken twice, correct?
So I asked to speak again. Mr. Chair.
Can we vote on that then?
To vote. To speak three times.
Okay, if you make a brief, please, yeah, all right.
I'll be brief.
Okay.
Joe, our, the core services review that we're currently going to be undertaking, our service to the public, is that part of that review?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct.
So we're about to make a decision before knowing how that, what that core service review actually looks like and comes back to council? You don't have to answer that, Joe. Joe, Council Maderos had indicated that prior, I guess, we've made decisions that have affected the budget prior to actually going into budget. Could you give me an example of one of those decisions? Is that correct? That's basically what you're saying, right? In a nutshell?
I, I recall that there have been a one or, one or two instances in.
One, I'll stop you there, Joe, thanks. One or two instances? One or two instances? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, Fortini, I'm going to give the last word.
Just a couple of questions. Joe, this is not going to impact the tax base, these positions. It's not going on the taxes.
Through the chair, as the motion is, is worded, that is the intent of our, of what we're trying to achieve.
To clarify, Council Pleschy's, he supported the whole, everything with number twelve. I'm trying to save the, a position because it's going to cost taxpayers or wherever we're getting the money, but now he doesn't want to support it or that position. So I'm trying to cut some of this budget down, looking at it, because the last time he did support it. So I just want to ask a recorded vote now on this and that's it. It'll be over with.
My word, just to confirm, Council Fortini's comments.
No, you can't talk no more than.
Yeah, I'll let you talk three times, Council Pleschy. Okay, so what's the point of order?
That there, there was comments directed towards me in a previous decision that I had made.
It's in the minutes. Yes, it's in the minutes.
Okay, okay, that's it. Okay, so are we, can we wrap up the debate now? Yeah, okay, Council Pleschy, I'm not going to give you a fourth, fourth time. Okay, so discussion is done, there's no motion. Mayor Brown, you had, you want to break?
No, that's different.
There is no motion on this?
Sorry, through you, through you, Chair Singh, I think, through you, Chair Singh, I think what we should do is bring closure to this item, to take the recorded vote as requested on clauses one to eleven, and then we can move on to Mayor Brown's additional item on corporate services. So a, through you, Chair Singh, a recorded vote has been requested on clauses one through eleven of recommendation CW zero-two-two, twenty-nineteen. All in favor, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is Councilor Santos, Councilor Visante, Mayor Brown, Councilor Maderos, Councilor Williams, Councilor Fortini, Chair Singh, Councilor Dillon. All opposed, please stand to be counted. Showing opposed is Councilor Williams, Councilor Pleschy, Councilor Bowman. Chair Singh, that motion carries, eight to three.
Thank you. And Mayor Brown, the floor is yours.
Yes, I have a motion moved by Councilor Santos, seconded by myself, that recommendation number, the council CW oh-one-one, twenty-nineteen, be referred to the committee council meeting to be held on January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, for further consideration. And let me just speak to that. That is an item we want to get some additional staff information on. This is the surplus from last year and we have questions about two issues that are currently unfunded in the city budget. We'll speak to that next week.
So you're requesting to pull that up?
Just defer it a week.
Defer it a week? Okay, I guess that's a motion, if I'm correct.
It's already, it's Councilor Santos' motion, seconded by council, by myself.
Okay, so anybody want to speak to that? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Seeing no other questions or comments, Mayor Brown, I return the chair to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Visante chaired the public works and engineering section. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, you have before you the minutes of the works and engineering section. Do any members have any questions on any item in this part of the agenda? Seeing no further questions or comments, Mayor Brown, I return the chair to you.
Council Santos chaired the community services section. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Members of council, you have before you the minutes from committee. Do any members have questions or comments on the committee minutes and recommendations? Seeing no further questions or comments, Mayor Brown, I return the chair to you.
Council will then consider a motion to approve the recommendations in its entirety after all section chairs have concluded their summaries and any resulting council questions or debate is finished. And members of council, you have before you the minutes from the committee. Do any members have questions or comments on the committee minutes and recommendations? Seeing no further questions or comments, we have a motion from Council Visante, seconded by Councilor Santos, to approve the committee minutes.
As amended.
As amended. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our next set of minutes is from the sports hall of fame committee, which met on January seventeenth to make its hall of fame selections. The committee minutes were distributed at the start of the meeting and are here for council approval. Council Bowman, you are the council representative on this committee. I will now pass the chair to you to lead council in consideration of the committee minutes.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor, the minutes are here for your consideration for the last sports hall of fame committee meeting. Do we have any questions? No. Seeing no questions, I will pass that back to you for ratification. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we have a motion from Councilor Bowman, seconded by Councilor Santos, to approve the committee minutes. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our next item is unfinished business, item eleven point one, a staff report regarding the Brampton Bramley Christian Fellowship residence fees and charges related to an affordable housing project. This item was deferred from December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Council meeting, to this meeting to allow staff to undertake additional investigation and analysis regarding this request. Do any members have questions or comments on the staff report? Seeing none, I have a motion from Councilor Bowman, seconded by Councilor Santos. We have a question, Council Singh has got a question.
Yeah, so can you give us a current status update of where we are with the pastor right now?
Yes, Mayor Brown, members of council. So, yeah, I did want to provide a quick update in terms of where we stand with, with our interactions with both the regional staff and the pastor, as well as respect, respectfully request a bit of an extension to, or a deferral for this, to a future council meeting. So we did have an opportunity to speak with regional staff. There were some challenges over the holiday period with the pastor. He was out of the country, so there were some challenges meeting with, with the pastor over that period of time. But we did have the opportunity, city staff, to sit with some regional staff to ask some further questions about this, this initiative. So we did find out some more. more information with respect to the units and how the profiles work with those. So, initially, as we had presented to council, there's 45 of the 90 units, which would be deemed to take a number of families off the central waiting list. The other 44, 44 of the other 45 units, we now understand that those units will be assessed using the same intake process as the, the other 45 units. So, the profiles of those families for those 44 additional units will have similar profiles as the 45 units that were, that would be taking families off the central waiting list. Those, that rental structure would remain in place for about 25, for 25 years. So, this is new information. So, you know, city staff in, our discussions with regional staff, we do see this as a true affordable housing project. Regional staff did also comment to mention that there still exists some financial gaps in terms of the, the, the project itself. And regional staff are working with the pastor to determine how they can adequately address those financial gaps. And a lot of it comes down to the financing sources. There's a couple of options out there. There's a preferred one, which would reduce the gap much more than, than a more traditional type of financing source. The regional staff did also comment to mention that they would not recommend to the council the deferral of development charges or other planning fees. And that, however, it was their intent that they would try to find within their budget and make a recommendation to fund any gap that would exist through the, the housing budget at the region. So, with that information, we do have a meeting set up with the pastor and the region and the city for next Monday. This will take a bit of time to, to work through the process, but we do want to be able to bring to council all the pertinent information so that you can make a fully informed decision. So, we're respectfully requesting a deferral to a future council meeting. I don't know which meeting that would be. There is April 1st still lingering as a, a critical date for this project to, to get its permits in place to begin excavation and so on. But again, if we could request a bit of a time extension, and we would bring it back to the appropriate council meeting for further discussion.
Right. So, if I may put that motion on the floor for a deferral? Another one. Yeah, move the staff report and-
We already have a motion that was moved by Counselor Bowman and Counselor Santos. Is it different than that?
Through you-
Does that include a deferral?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I understand staff are requesting a deferral to allow further analysis and things to be investigated with the region. Counselor Singh has taken that motion up-
Yeah.
-to move deferral. So, it now will take precedent over the-
Moving the report.
-motion to, to approve the staff report. And the deferral is to an appropriate city council meeting prior to April 2019, April 1st.
April 1st.
2019.
I would like to put that motion on.
It's, it's a procedural motion, so it doesn't require a second, but it can't have a second if-
Is it not a redundant motion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's not. It's a procedural motion to actually just postpone consideration of the motion in front of you until a future date. And that takes precedent over the main motion, which is you have before you.
But isn't, isn't that what the main motion requests?
The main motion is requesting approval of option one, which is contained in the staff report that was published with you.
Same thing.
Sorry. So, through, through you, Mr. Mayor, I understand the staff report recommendation is to go with option one, which was setting up a deferral agreement that the city would execute.
Okay.
But I understand what the treasurer's saying is further deferral of the entire matter to allow additional consultation with the region and the proponent.
Okay. So, I'd like to put that on the floor.
Okay. All those, is he gonna vote on that? All those in favor? Motion carries.
We don't want to deal with this one.
Okay, our next item is the added item from Counselor Visante, new business. Counselor Visante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if it pleases this council, I would like for us to consider this discussion on what we'll call a community improvement plan. I believe the clerk has a motion, and we'll just put that up on the screen. But before we read the motion, I just want to give some of my comments and also offer an opportunity for staff to comment as well. During the past election, we all heard loud and clear that the lack of available jobs in this city was an important priority for us to work on. And there are a number of ways in which we can facilitate job creation within the city, whether it's making places or incentives. But I think as we go forward, we want to give staff the necessary tools so that they can do their work towards bringing and attracting more business investment to Brampton, to encourage more investment from within Brampton. And so, the purpose of a community improvement plan generally is to establish programs that link land uses and planning with tools and incentives to achieve these goals. And these incentives could include development charge incentives, facade improvement programs, which you already have in place here in the city, property tax increment-based grants, direct investment and development partnerships, community benefits agreements, and so forth. And so, again, before we read this motion, I would just let you know that this motion was put together by staff in various departments for us to consider. And I hope that as we go through the discussion, we realize how important this is going forward and that we approve this either as it is or with your amendments. And so, I would invite Mr. Bob Darling to comment on the importance of this.
Thank you, Counselor Visante, through, through the mayor. So, one of the things that we've, have looked at is, in order, as the mandate threw us through jobs, is the challenge of level playing field. And many of our competing municipalities have incentives. And we do, as Counselor Visante said, we do have the facade improvement program, we have the deferral of DCs, or waiver of DCs. But the challenge we have sometimes is that, you know, what we're seeing, and it really is leveling the playing field with our competitors. We do also realize that municipalities or boundaries have no, no real options for, for business. They're looking at the best deal for themselves. So, we would like the opportunity to come back to council with some recommendation on different zones of the city that we see through the 2040 vision. It gives us opportunity to maybe look at specific incentives in those zones. If you look at, for example, the Kennedy Road over to the 410 south of Queen, we have opportunities to put some brownfield remediation incentives in. We know tax incentive is an opportunity for us, or for us to market the city a little bit more and give us the, sort of the hook that we need to get out to these different businesses and attract them to our city. So, we're just looking for the opportunity to present this to you, to, for your comments, to see if there's an opportunity that we can come back with a, with a proper presentation, looking at different zones across the city that we would put incentives in to encourage investment and jobs in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Darling. And, Mr. Chair, I believe I have a second or further motion with Counselor Dillon. And so, the motion reads as follows, whereas the city of Brampton's 2040 vision defines Brampton as a mosaic of vibrant centers with quality jobs, a rich range of activities and integrated living, and whereas the city of Brampton official plan has policies and designations to support economic development and job creation, and whereas the city of Brampton Economic Development Master Plan approved in 2018 sets forth a mission to create a business community and business climate in Brampton that supports the creation of more than 140,000 net new local jobs over the next 20 years, with the goal of at least 60% of residents working within this community. And whereas the community improvement, whereas community improvement plans are important tools for marketing the city of Brampton, to drive investment and provide the city with a competitive advantage, and whereas the city of Brampton approved a community improvement plan for specific zones in the central area in the year 2000, therefore be it resolved that city staff, planning, finance, economic development, and legal be directed to develop a report for council's consideration as part of budget deliberations for a potential citywide community improvement plan, which will assist in attracting additional employment, development in Brampton's key sectors, innovation and technology, entrepreneurship, advanced manufacturing, and health and life sciences, to attract and revitalize specific uses such as office, mixed use, industrial, and manufacturing. And that is the motion. And, and I believe that this is something which will benefit every single ward in this city. It offers every single part of the city the opportunity to be able to compete, not just locally for jobs, but also internationally, to attract foreign investment. And this applies for the Vision 2040 and the zones that were identified there. For example, the Uptown, the Five Zones, Shoppers World. It will benefit areas around Sheridan College. It'll develop and, it'll help and assist staff in promoting our employment lands, including the Mississauga Road area and the downtown area, the Queen Street corridor, Kennedy Road, and on and on. And so, I open up the floor now to your questions and welcome your comments. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you, Counselor Visante. I know we have a long list of speakers. I'm just gonna add a little bit of context in that might be helpful. This is not coming from left field. This is something that staff felt was important. And I can tell you that right now, we are in the process of the retention of jobs in Brampton and also trying to pursue jobs. And what we found during these initial efforts on a retention of significant employment that I shouldn't speak to specifically, but just to say, this is a useful tool. And I, I think it's important to give our economic development staff the tools they require to make sure we have jobs in, in Brampton. This is a priority for our city council. And I thank Counselor Visante for working with city staff to put this forward. I think the sooner we can get these tools at the disposal of our economic development staff, the better. So, thank you for working so closely with the economic development staff on this item, Counselor Visante. And next up, we have Counselor Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very glad that Counselor Visante has taken the lead on this, and I'm very honored to second the motion. I think it's very important, and I'm glad staff has seen the light, that we need a, a citywide strategy. It's something that I tried to get the support of from staff last term as well. That we can't ignore the rest of the city. We've got to make sure that everybody has equal opportunity to develop business in the same way that the central area did. If I give you an example, Ward 9 and 10 only has 5% of all business in Brampton, and they never had the same luxuries as a facade program or a building improvement program, or any other type of assistance. Each area in the city is different. The demographic is different. Geography is different. Everybody, every particular ward, whether we're going with the quadrants, we're going with the wards, I think everybody needs to be part of economic development. And I'm, I'm very glad that you brought this up. I'm glad that you have the support of staff for this. And I hope my fellow council colleagues around the table are able to support it as well. And we want to make sure that every part of Brampton grows and benefits. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Willens?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not opposed to this. It's, I think it's a good motion. But I think offline, I'd like to talk to staff on how this is different than what we've already been trying to achieve. So, but I don't want to get in discussion now. We'll do it offline. Thank you.
Counselor Bowman?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Much the same question as Counselor Willens. But, but I will bring it up. I mean, we've, we've got-
Let's do it online.
Well, I mean, we've got a planning master plan coming that, that has to be approved. We've got an economic development master plan that already was approved. We've got the Vision 2040, which includes all of this, which has already been approved. We've got a transit master plan that also focuses on improving all the areas of the city. So, I mean, we've got four individual master plans that are already supposed to be focused. And, and Counselor Visante, I, I fully agree that this is a wonderful plan, but I'm just wondering, we've got four existing plans already that we've already approved over, well, three, planning hasn't been done yet, but over the last four months or three months. And if, if that's the case, that we're not bringing these all together, I'm not sure whether one month, our deliberations for budget, some of the workshops start in two weeks. I'm not sure whether that gives us enough time to, to pull all those together and, and work as a group. Perhaps, perhaps I'm wrong. I don't know. Thanks.
Counselor Palaschis, a question? Was that a-
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I could respond to Counselor Bowman's inquiry. The CIP program is, is actually something that's structured much like an official plan amendment to the city. It's not just a matter of staff drawing lines in certain areas, but in order to implement certain financial incentives and other non-financial incentives, we have to go through a process, which is much like an official plan amendment. There's public consultation, provincial approvals, working with the region. I think what we would like to do in short order is report back on where we believe key areas of the city and key incentive tools that would work to achieve these goals would lie. So, this is a formal process we actually have to go through. It will take some time, but I think through the budget discussions, we can identify the various tools, what they might cost, the return on investment of some of those tools, so that we can inform council about where we'd like to go in the longer term.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. I shall have to-
Yes, yes.
I took you off.
Thanks, thanks, Rob. And I understand that. I just want to make sure that, as you mentioned, this is a, this is a, excuse me, I got a horse throat here. This is a long-term plan. It's a long-term commitment. And I don't want to go into budget in a month from now or two weeks from now, talking about the ifs and could's and things like that. I would, I would like to see this fleshed out. I would like to see some actual numbers put on it, so that when we, when we do talk about it in budget discussions, that we know really what, what a, what a budget allocation would be now, what the budget allocations to each individual department that's going to be involved would be, and what that budget allocation is going to be going forward for the next, if we're doing a five-year budget. So, no problem there. Thanks, Rob.
I accidentally took Counselor Palaschis off the list, so I'm gonna jump you back to the top.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the motion, Counselor Visante. I think it's a, it's a good motion. I'm happy to support it. A few questions with relation to the 140,000 new jobs and how that pertains to the regional official plan. We don't really have capability to increase and really play with our numbers too much. We do that at the region, and I'm happy to fight that fight with you and other regional councils at the region. But with the current regional official plan, 3141, how does that, what do these numbers have, how do they affect those plans?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor. The region does set employment targets. And I would remind council that, that the numbers that we worked up through, the planning region, were aspirational. And using traditional methods, when you looked at the simple calculation of how much land area is dedicated to employment, with traditional uses of manufacturing and things like that, that would not achieve the number of jobs that we're aspiring to do here. But working with different types of employment forms, we think that, you know, we're up for that aspirational target, and we're gonna work hard to, to achieve that. Looking at different types of employment uses, more mixed use, higher density employment opportunities. So, we appreciate that it is aspirational, but we want to reach for, for something great for the city.
And I, and I look forward to those discussions, because I'm not sure what that, you know, I know the province doesn't recognize some employment as employment, even though we know from our residents that somebody working at Costco makes a good dollar, even, and unfortunately, the province doesn't recognize those, as those employment type of, of numbers that we're trying to create here in the city. With at least 60% of residents working within the community, how do we, that would be fantastic. I wish it was 75. How do, how do we, how do we police that? How is that possible? Isn't that like saying to our community, start buying local, which I think isn't really allowed? allowed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's not so much a matter of policing it, it's monitoring it. It's really an indicator of how successful we are of creating jobs and opportunities within the city. And the benefit of that is, you know, there's so many folds to that. It's reducing people's transit time, it's reducing demands on the infrastructure. So, that's a bit of a tangent conversation, but it's not a matter of policing it, it's a matter of reaching that aspirational goal to have people work within close proximity to where they live. And the benefits are, they're so tremendous on so many fronts. So, again, it's an aspirational target that we're, you know, striving to achieve.
Okay. So, we're not getting into the private sector to dictate to them that they need 60% of their, their jobs here in Brampton need to come from residents, or we're not diving into it like that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, that wouldn't be the case.
Right, okay. Over the next 20 years. Why not 10 years?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The numbers really were aligned with the work of the planning vision, which was a 2040 document. Certainly, we want to incrementally get there over time. We also have to work within the planning horizon set out, which was 2031 and 2041. We felt that that 2040 target is something to strive for, and obviously, we would report over time to see how our progress is, you know, accomplishing that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Pelashy. And I just stress, to keep it on the, on the motion, in fairness to staff, I want to say, this is not staff finding the light. This is them working closely with council on a current economic development initiative, saying, we wish we had this tool. It is Counselor Vicente responding to what was raised by staff. And we've always said we need economic development and planning to work closer together. This is exactly what they're doing, and as I say, we're not gonna wait on giving them a tool that they said they wish they have now. It's giving them that tool right away. So, next up on the list, Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff and Counselor Vicente for putting this motion forward. I definitely support it, and I would like to propose a very friendly amendment because, sorry? No, not five years. I wish. No. And it has to do with the Vision 2040 document and specific reverence to the Institute for Sustainable Brampton. I would like to put in there, because in the vision, we are trying to, through the institute, bring green jobs to Brampton. So, if we could add in the key sectors, green and sustainable technology and manufacturing, that would be great. It may be covered under innovation and technology, but I think further emphasis to green and sustainability, sustainable technology and manufacturing would be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. That's a friendly amendment? Counselor Fertini.
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you, Rob. You answered some questions. So, Bob, the facade program, I remember Counselor Dillon always raised an issue, are we gonna go across the whole city now, or just, it's gonna be spread?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor. This is exactly the types of things that we would look in as we investigate our opportunities. The one thing we need to be mindful of is, this is all investment on behalf of the city. So, where do we want to see the greatest return? Where are the greatest opportunities? So, you know, here in front of you, I can't really answer that. We've got some work to do to figure that out exactly. So, we want to make sure that, you know, areas that are in need have those tools available to them, and that we actually see a return on that. We do know that when we invest in some of these facade improvement programs in aging parts of the city, that it uplifts the neighborhood, it improves the property value of that building. So, we want to do that homework to figure out where those opportunities are, but we also recognize that there's, you know, there's a limited amount of investment that can be made on behalf of the city, taxpayer, to do that. So, we have to be very deliberate about where we would recommend those, but we just don't have an answer today on that.
Are we gonna actually call or knock on their door, say, would you like certain areas? Like, I know in wards seven or on the south side where I live, you know, one of our wards are, there's a bunch of places we could actually, or we have to wait for them to come to us?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, the CIP approval process actually does require community engagement and public meetings. So, to the extent to which we would go door knocking, I think that would be fairly onerous, but we would look at how do we involve the community appropriately, so that they're on board and support this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Maderos.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Counselor Vicente and staff for bringing this forward. I guess to some of the comments previously of all the master plans that we have, my understanding, and please correct me, either Rob or Bob, through Mr. Mayor, this actually identifies concrete tools that we can use, which still feeds in, supports the other plans. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, you're absolutely correct. And I think the challenge that we have in economic development is just, is sort of, when we're talking to these types of businesses that are looking at relocating, is just really that, in a broad word, a hook, something that really can stimulate them, that really get them. You know, if we do a tax incentive, it's only the city portion what we're obligated and allowed to do. It's not a lot of money, but it really does open those discussions up for our economic development team. So, this is really, it's a, it's a marketing tool for us. You look at the city of Hamilton has probably a dozen of these types of incentives. Do they utilize them? Not necessarily. You know, Toronto has them. Do they utilize them? One or two a year, but it really is a marketing tool for our department.
Thank you through Mr. Mayor. And I guess the timeliness of this, I do hope there's an aggressive approach, and I guess I comment to you, Joe. I find a lot of the initiatives which are cross-functional and cross-departmental, you sort of have to have that accountability structure, and you need that one horse really leading the charge. So, I'm hoping that this becomes an initiative that gets driven. And, you know, it's up to you who, I understand we have two commissioners, two departments, but I think there's many initiatives that we need that one sort of contact person who's driving the initiative.
Through the chair, something we are initiating is what we're calling the directly responsible individual. So, along your lines, one person will be held as the lead and accountable for driving it.
Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Thank you through you, Mayor. I just want to say, Paul, this is, Counselor Vicente, this is a great motion and initiative. I think a lot, most of us want to see specifics with regard to the incentives, and, you know, I know we've had many discussions around, and families have had discussions in their home around what is going to make Brampton better, but the how is usually the question lingering. So, I'm excited to see what the outcomes of this will be. And then also, I always want to encourage all staff to explain things in a way that we can explain to everyone, even the child in grade four, five, who's really excited about the future in Brampton. So, finding ways to make this very translatable amongst all ages is going to be extremely helpful as well.
So, through the mayor, that's a great comment. And when I went through this exercise with Counselor Vicente, I did provide him a bit of a briefing note of what a community improvement plan, and I think I'd like to offer that out, and I can send out today to all of council, what a community improvement plan and what it means to a community. So, I'll send that out to all of us, all of council today.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Willens.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Vicente, or, well, Counselor Vicente for the motion, but thank you, Counselor Santos, for adding the green sustainable technology and manufacturing business section into it. Counselor Pelashy and I had a pleasure of sitting down with MPP, the Minister of Environment, Rod Phillips, yesterday. And if you look forward in the Made in Ontario Environmental Master Plan under 18.2, it's gonna be a challenge in that sector, because their plans pretty much, and he pretty much said it yesterday, they're gonna rely heavily on the private sector to take action on improving the environment. So, whatever we can do to help them certainly is going to help, because he was pretty clear about that. So, thank you for putting it in there, and certainly through Partners in Project Green, we will also work closely with economic development. Thank you.
Counselor Vicente for a second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just want to say thank you to all members of council for your comments, and just to point out that this council is watching all the details, and we are listening to what the people of the city are saying to us, and we're also listening to what staff are saying to us with respect to the tools that they need. The Vision 2040 document is an aspirational vision. It's a, it's a collection of all the dreams and the wishes of all the people of this city. And Larry Beasley was able to take all of that input and create something which really is a guiding document. But the devil is in the details. It's how we get it done. And so, staff, since that plan was approved by this council, and you may all recall that I delegated in favor of that, staff has embarked on the huge task of collecting, creating the blueprint on how we're going to make that plan come to fruition. While they're doing that, it's our job to ensure that when, once they reach that point and they are ready to start doing the building, that they have the tools in their toolkit, so then they can go out and promote the city. So, I don't want staff to have a plan and to be ready to get to work and sell the city, and then we have to embark on another process that then forces another delay, because we find out that we're ready to go, we're ready to start attracting business, but then we don't have the incentives in place, a program that council has reviewed and approved, so that we can sell the city and we can say to businesses that we are here and we want to attract you, and we're willing to offer you an incentive, so that when you're choosing between our city and another jurisdiction, you choose Brampton first, because we're making it as easy as possible. So, it's all about getting rid of the red tape, but also offering the incentives and making it Brampton as attractive as possible for foreign direct investment, and also for local investments to grow. Because, keep in mind that 70% of new jobs come from the businesses that are here already. And so, if they are looking to also expand their business here in Brampton, and we need to offer them the incentives to ensure that they stay here and that they continue to grow and prosper with us, that they participate in the vision, that we are able to offer those. So, thank you for your questions, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, we have the motion on the floor. Do we have a copy of that on the screen? Okay, so, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Vicente. Our next item is Government Relations Matters. Materials have been distributed electronically to council yesterday by the CEO's office, and at the start of today's meeting by the clerk's office. Lowell Ruben Vaughn, Office of the CEO, is here to respond to any questions from council. Do any members have questions? And I see we already have a list. Counselor Vicente, you're back at it. No? Okay, Counselor Willens.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lowell, for your comments, and on the proposed Made in Ontario Environment Plan, public consultation, your comments pretty much hit the nail right on the head. So, I won't really elaborate on it. You did a good job going through it. A lot of it speaks to the needs that we need in Brampton and throughout the region as well, because as you know, there's really not, a lot in that plan. But thank you for addressing ones that are concern us.
Thank you, counsel, and through the mayor. One thing that I do want to acknowledge, this submission, as well as the housing submission, and plus all the other public consultations that the province has embarked on, very much is a cross-collaboration across all departments. We know that not one department owns any of these, so if, whether it's housing or environment, a number of the planning-related matters, this is very much a collaboration. And I do want to pick up on one point, counsel, that you did mention around private sector jobs. That was definitely a key message that we heard during AMO from every ministry. It's while the provincial government is happy to grow jobs, they're very clear that it is very much in the private, private sector. So, whether or not it's all our large infrastructure projects, we have to really understand what that ROI is, and in particular, how many private sector jobs are. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion from Counselor Willens, seconded by Counselor Bowman, and this is to adopt items 18.1, 18.2, and 18.3. So, do we have a motion? Should we have all those in favor? Motion carries. We can now deal with item 19, the public question period. This is where we invite members of the public to come forward to the podium and ask any questions about any decision made specifically at today's meeting, and there's a 15-minute limit. Are there any questions from the public? Sylvia?
Hello. Yeah, you already introduced me. So, you're talking about incentives, and we're talking about getting jobs in a lot of places, like the US, where you have municipalities competing for jobs with tax incentives. Kansas City is the best example. There's Missouri side and a Kansas side, and the money is actually just shuffling the jobs across the border. So, over a 20-year period, the same employer might be on one side, and then the other, and then the other side. There's no new jobs being created, but it's money out of the taxpayers' pocket. I want to know what steps the city is taking to actually have the base of the argument look good, so you don't have to bribe people to move here. When you have to pay people to move here, it's pretty clear that they don't think your city is good enough based on the merits. When you look at what the private sector wants for office space, they want transportation. That is the biggest use, that's the biggest emitting sector in Ontario.
If we keep it to a question?
What steps is the city taking to do things like improve the amount of office space? We've got a third of Burlington despite having three times as many people as Burlington.
Thank you, Sylvia. And just to, I'm gonna refer this to the economic development chair. We're not actually providing financial incentives. Maybe you could just speak directly. That's something allowed in the US, but it's not, I don't think that's a tool available in Ontario municipal.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I can address this. Certainly, when a CIP is approved, there are things like development charge waivers, and there are some financial tools, but to the delegation's point, one of our best tools is actually creating a great place to become attractive. When companies are making decisions about relocating, they want lifestyle to be something that's taken into consideration. They want destinations. They want a great place to live. So, part of our incentive is actually making sure that we have great places to live, good built form, good parks, all of those types of things. And honestly, we actually have a lot of that already. Part of this is a marketing tool to make sure that people are aware of that. So, there are some financial incentives, and I do agree that we don't want to get into a contest with our next-door neighbors where people would hop back and forth. We want to make sure when we get them here, we keep them here. But those are the things we'd want to look at and make sure that council's well-informed about those investments that would be made. So, it is a suite of many, many things. It's not just about financing. There's so many elements to this, and that's why it's not an easy undertaking, but we think it's a very important undertaking for the city.
Now, I want to be clear. In the United States, a city may be able to write a check for $100,000 or $1 million to land a business. That's not, it's different here. To say that we're gonna waive or defer development charges for something that they're going to build privately and independently is very different than the tools that exist in the United States. The tools that municipalities have are very much not the same tools that are available in Ontario. When you hear stories about a check being given to a private company, there was the whole issue about the Brampton company that relocated to London, and there was the provincial government giving them a large check. Of course, many of us were critical that a provincial or federal government can do that, a municipal government can't. And so, our tools are very closely specified. The deferral or waiving of partial development charges is one of the small tools that we have.
There was this city in Ontario that basically gave the equivalent of more than $100 grand per job in order to get G to move there. That's a lot of money per job.
Counselor Vicente?
To respond to the question?
Oh.
Want to respond to the question?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Sylvia, you raised some very good points, and we'll engage in this discussion as we go forward and fine-tune this, but this council, for example, had an opportunity just recently to visit a local business, and they're a longtime big employer here in the city, and they're struggling in terms of their space requirements, and they're looking potentially to move up. So, if we streamline that process through an incentive of some kind, whether it's cutting of red tape or streamlining the application process so that they can move to a new location, yes, there's no new net jobs created. However, the shell, the factory, the empty building that they leave behind, that empty building that they leave behind is an opportunity- building that they leave behind is an opportunity for a smaller company to move up. And given that the city of Brampton has also embarked on a desire to incubate new businesses, it's kind of like the, you know, the hermit crab, where it moves up from one building to the next and to a larger one. And so if we help even large companies to relocate within the city, that creates new opportunities for medium and smaller businesses to have the space that they need, and that doesn't even require new buildings to be constructed. And so I think that anything that we can do to help business create jobs in the city, even when it's just a no new net job created, is a good thing for us to be doing, because we create the opportunity for the new jobs to be established. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I just verified the city clerk, maybe I'll get legal to our city solicitor Dennis to verify, but if we wanted to write a check for a hundred thousand to a private company, that's not something the municipality is entitled to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you, that kind of expense is known as bonusing, which is prohibited by the Municipal Act. Community improvement plans represent exceptions from the bonusing provisions, or the bonusing prohibition, for the purpose of improving elements of the community, such as brown fields and areas that are aged.
And so hopefully that allays any concerns that you may, you may have. Okay, seeing no more items, we're now at the portion of the meeting dealing with adoption of city bylaws. To give effect to council's decisions made at this meeting and previous meetings, I have a motion by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Willens, to approve the bylaws. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our next item is, business is item twenty-one, the closed session business. I have a motion from councillor Willens, seconded by councillor Bowman, to move into closed session and deal with the following items as listed in the agenda. We need to read them out, okay. The council proceeding to closed session discussed matters pertaining to the following. Twenty-one point one, minutes closed session city council regular meeting December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Twenty-one point two, minutes closed session committee of council, January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Twenty-one point three, minutes closed session sports hall of fame committee, January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Twenty-one point four, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board property lease matter. Twenty-one point five, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, local planning appeal tribunal matter. Twenty-one point six, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board property acquisition matter. All those in favor? Motion carries. Does council want a break before we go on camera? I'm seeing one, no, I'm seeing one, yes, so, ten minutes. In the continued interest to transparency and open government, I will report in public session any outcomes from today's closed session business. As a result of the closed session today, I wish to report the following. Twenty-one point one, minutes closed session city council regular meeting December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. These minutes were acknowledged by council. Twenty-one, item two, eight minutes closed session committee of council, January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. These minutes were acknowledged by council. Twenty-one point three, minutes closed session sports hall of fame committee, January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. These minutes were acknowledged by council. Twenty-one point five, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board property lease matter. The item was considered in closed session and direction was given to staff. Twenty-one point six, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, local planning appeal tribunal matter. This item was considered in closed session and direction was given to staff. Twenty-one point seven, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board property acquisition matter. This item was considered in closed session and direction was given to staff. Our next item business is item twenty-two, confirming bylaw. I have a motion from councillor Willens, seconded by councillor Bowman, to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our last item business is item twenty-three, adjournment. Thank you, members, for your respectful consideration and decisions today, and thank you, your staff, for the information and advice. Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen, nine thirty a.m., and after that, Wednesday, February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, at nine thirty a.m. I should mention, we do have a few celebrations coming up. On January twenty-fourth, we have city council's Tamil Heritage Month celebration at six thirty p.m., and I hope that everyone can come to that. And of course, we have the Chinese New Year event on February eighth, from twelve to two, and the public is welcome at both those celebrations. I have a motion by councillor Fortini, seconded by councillor Willens, to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay. The motion carries despite councillor Bowman's protest.